Yeah.
All right, good. I will call, guess what, the October, uh, time of emissions in a quarter. We have the roll call, please.
Chair Lane?
Here.
Okay, he is here. Commissioner Tanelli?
Here.
Commissioner Soklo?
Here.
Commissioner Lamb?
Here.
Commissioner Lerner?
Here.
All right, and the next item on the agenda is public comments, and what we do on the public comments in this section is, there's someone here to talk on an item other than what's on the agenda, who is sometimes very often be forming up an item that we look into later on, or they bring something up that we would want to know about, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for anything that someone wants to talk about, other than what's on the agenda. So, I'll open the public hearing, and if you're here to talk on something other than what's on the agenda, we're ready for that right now, and there's a mad crowd running to the microphone, but I'll, no one's coming up, so we'll stop, and I'll close the public hearing on that item. And now we have the approval of the minutes from the September 27th.
I didn't have any change.
No. I didn't either. The only, the only, there was one, uh, let's see, there was one question, I had on one item. On the, on the second page of the minutes, in the back of the third page, it says Chair Lane asked, "Project was only to remove project or sub-project." I think, I think, uh, Commissioner Tanelli actually brought it up, and I, and I piggybacked on it, so I didn't know if, oh, if you wanted to get credit for that on that.
That's right.
All right, good, I, that's, because I was actually, actually commenting on that, so.
That's all right.
We'll leave it the way it is.
You think you want to say anything?
Okay. I vote on him, yeah. All right, so.
I have to say that, um, my, my innocence gone throughout, I don't know that.
Yeah, yeah, sure, that's, that's, let's do that. We want to make sure you get credit for that, so.
Well.
All right, all right.
Move, move the eight seconds.
Move, move. Move to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. All right, then we have two items for public hearing, and, uh, so first, so, for those of you who haven't been, been here before, may explain how the process works on this. We'll start with the, uh, an overview from staff on the item, they'll give us an overview, and then we'll hear from, go off in the public hearing, we'll hear from the applicant, or applicant's representative, and anyone else, and then we'll hear from anyone else who wants to talk on the subject, and then we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate, we'll do that on all our items. So, I'll put this one then, I'll go ahead, and this is for a continuation of the, of an item that from the September 27th, uh, agenda, was the special structures permit for 385 Fletcher Drive, and I'll go ahead and open up the staff for the overview.
Thank you, Chair. So, tonight, the request before you at 385 Fletcher is for a special structures permit to allow both the swimming pool and its associated equipment to be within the required front yard setback area for accessory structures, which both of, both of those two items are defined as by zoning code. Um, a little bit of background, originally scheduled for your September meeting, applicant did request a continuance, given some concerns that were expressed by the left side neighbor, if you're standing on Fletcher, looking up closest side to the pool at 387 Fletcher. Uh, that neighbor had some concerns with the proximity of the pool, both to the shared property line, as well as to some existing trees along the shared property line, potential impacts that could result from its original cited location. I have, I have spoke directly to that neighbor on numerous occasions, prior to tonight's meeting, as well as at the point of, um, the original application, and he expressed all those concerns to me directly, as well. So, uh, fast forward to the request for continuance from the September meeting, the project applicant did meet directly with the neighbor, and made some revisions to the plans, those are the plans that are in front of you tonight, that effectively shifted the swimming pool farther away from that shared property line, as well as the location of the pool equipment. So, specifically, um, the swimming pool, uh, that was originally proposed at slightly less than 23 feet from that shared property line, is now proposed, uh, to be slightly less than 36 feet from that shared property line. Um, the associated pool equipment that was originally cited to be a little less than 13 feet, has bumped over another less, about less than a foot, but its situation now, previously was just on an open concrete pad, with no other structure surrounding it. The pool equipment now is to be cited, wedged in, wedged into the corner of the existing retaining walls that are on the site. Uh, it's the applicant's intent of that situation to try to help mitigate any potential noise impacts that could result from the, um, operation of the equipment. He has also talked and worked with the adjacent neighbor on enhancing the final proposed landscape screening plan, to create more of a dense vegetation wall, so to speak, around the open sides of that equipment, or opposite those retaining walls, to further attempt to mitigate the noise, um, that could result from the equipment. So, I reviewed these revised plans with the neighbor, uh, he did state that he was happy that the project applicant was, uh, willing to work with him, and he has no opposition to the placement of the swimming pool under the current set of plans. He did express the potential, um, for some concerns with the operation and the noise impacts related to the equipment. Uh, the situation of the equipment does actually exceed minimum setback requirements as relates to the site and rear property line, um, since we know now that most of this equipment, and under industry standards, does, has proven to be below the town's adopted noise, um, ordinance, as just an extra step of assurance, I have put in a recommended condition of approval that prior to the filing of the permit, if the commission was to approve its location, the applicant, of course, needs to get a building permit to construct all of the, um, improvements, that we send our building inspector out, we actually have a decibel meter reader that can read noise levels, just to confirm that its operation in its proposed location, which will be its final location, is meeting the town's noise ordinance. So, I shared that condition with the applicant, uh, excuse me, with the neighbor, um, as well, and he was, um, he was satisfied that that follow-through would assure compliance with minimum standards as required by the town's municipal code. So, with all of that said, um, staff does find that the proposed setback location for this, uh, swimming pool and equipment encroaching within the front yard area, I should probably state what that is, which I haven't, um, yet, but it is specified in the staff report. Uh, swimming pool, under standard application, would need to be 120 feet from the front property line, or 30 feet behind the front line of the main house. Uh, the swimming pool is proposed to be situated, little less than 80 feet from the front property line, um, and a little less than 17 feet behind the front line of the main house, so about half of what otherwise would have been required. So, with that now said, um, staff has found that the application with the conditions as listed in the draft special structures permit is able to meet the required findings in order to grant approval. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, and the project applicant is here as well, and I know that he would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Questions to staff?
I just want to clarify, this is the first the town has seen of the application. So, the original placement of the pool was, did not go through this process?
No, the original placement of the pool in the home was originally proposed for construction two-plus years ago, had the pool in a situation, or situational location that wouldn't have triggered the need for any additional tier of planning and commission review, it met the standard requirements.
So, when I went on the property?
Yes.
I was looking for that, where would that pool have been?
It would have been directly behind the house, where now, if you walked the site, there's some low-tiered landscaped retaining walls. Um, before those walls were built, um, last rainy season, and I did include that in the staff report as well, the project engineer found that the topography of the site and its existing conditions led to some pretty significant erosion issues, so there was concern about excavating out in that area to the depth of a set of some pool would require in placing it there in the long-term ramifications.
Yeah, that's what I saw, I think, just a nice line going into a pool, but we're gonna be put back there. Okay, any other, any other questions, staff? Is there any other one?
Yeah.
All right, then I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, so we'll hear from the applicant first. You come up to the room, just a second, yourself.
Good afternoon, uh, my name is Farhad Naemi, I am the builder at 385 Fletcher Drive. Uh, as Stephanie explained in details, uh, the erosion that caused by rain last year raised some red flags, so I got the engineers involved, and the decision was, basically, to build the garden returning walls to flatten down the area. So, that, that was the reason that we decided, okay, now the swimming pool is not gonna fit there, it's not in a good location, there are some concerns in future, the only flat area I had on the left side, which was very wide and flat, that's where we decided to move the swimming pool, that's how really everything started.
Good. Any questions? All right, good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is anyone else not here to speak on this item? Then I'll bring it back to the final question for discussion and action as appropriate.
I think Stephanie's explanation of the circumstances, coupled with what we have written in our preliminary reports, is very satisfactory and convincing and logical, so I can understand it, I don't have any further questions.
Yeah, I happen to be, uh, going out of property, and the applicant was there, and so he got his order, and it looks to be very good, plus that the, uh, pool behind that retaining, going on the side retaining wall, so I, I would, I think it's gonna be married very well in the, you know.
I think it's great, too, that they talked to the neighbor.
Yeah, yeah.
Got that over as well.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a very good neighbor thing to do.
Definitely. I, I suggest that to everyone, you know, we need to have that communication.
All right, so, when you vote?
Would you like me to answer, would you want to move?
Go ahead, we'll also.
Okay, moved, and the planning commission approved the special structure permit at 385 Fletcher Drive, based on findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed in the special structure permit certificate, to allow swimming pool and associated pool equipment to be located within the front yard setback.
And second. All right, move to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose? None? Passes unanimously. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you for taking the extra time to.
Are you for?
Hey, you know what, we have a really exciting agenda following, if you want to stay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Usually I'm used to playing in this bigger room, so. All right, um, let's go with, uh, item 4B, the request for tentative parcel map, to merge six parcels into one, and the heritage tree removal permit to allow the removal of 18 heritage trees for the Civic Center project in 91 Asheville Road. Uh, and, and let me, for those of you who came in just a little later, let me make sure that you understand the process that we, that we use on all our items. Uh, we'll go ahead and get an overview from staff on this item, we'll, the commission will ask questions of staff, and we'll open up for public comment, and then, uh, then we'll hear from everyone who wants to speak, and then we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate, so we're gonna get a chance to, uh, to speak on the item. All right, with that, then I'll go ahead and.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, due to my, working with the Civic Center and advisory committee, and my intimate knowledge of this project, I think it's probably, uh, best if I recuse myself for this item on the agenda.
That's good, all right, that's good.
I'll be outside, watching the world series.
I figured that you're gonna be shaking your tie or something. All right. The MG move has moved, I'll know that you found the expertise.
Thank you.
All right. So, the record will show that the tentative was around, and he's sequestered. So, with that, then I'll go, go ahead and, uh, we'll get an overview from staff, is there legal opinion on this one, too, or not?
Not opinion, just a little bit of scene settings, I think, again, I can come to these strange scenarios, but this is sort of like P G N E, where we have a situation where zoning is under the general police powers of the town, and the town sets its own zoning. So, the town, in a situation like this, would be basically asking itself permission to do what it wants to do. So, as a result, it's exempt from its own zoning regulations, because of course we can give itself that power. So, that would be the normal circumstance, but the city council has said that they want to go through the process, and which I think shows great respect for the process and how it works, they wanted these things run through the planning commission. So, we're in a bit of a gray area, like P G N E, where I don't know what happens if you say no, I think they would respect that, because they've asked, they'd be sent here, they've asked for your command, they've asked to follow the process. So, I'll be here to help you muddle through it, that's sort of the way it's structured, but I, I think you treat it like any other item, but we anticipated that might come up, so it's a little unusual.
But this one's different, we're not voting on the project, we're recommending it to the council, right?
On the tree, you would be the decision-making authority, and on, on the map, you would be making the recommendation.
However, it's appealable to the council.
Yeah.
So, if the council didn't like your decision, they would appeal it to themselves, which I, I think we all recognize is a little unusual, but that is the circumstance here.
All right, thank you for that. Send us a vote, please. All right.
I can give the staff presentation, thank you. Uh, so the town's been working on efforts to develop a new town center, as long as I've been here, probably longer, so well over 20 years, but they really kind of got going on the current effort in 2013 with the establishment of the Civic Center Advisory Committee. Um, they developed the master plan, that was kind of that guiding document that outlined the development parameters, and an E I R was prepared and was certified, uh, for that master plan project. So, that environmental document cleared the project moving forward, and I've evaluated this project under that E I R and find that it does, it is in compliant, and we do not need to do further sequo analysis. So, the Civic Center consists of, the entire property consists of five acres, um, you, you know where it's generally located, um, the only building that will remain at the end of it is this building here, so the town hall would be demolished with the police center, the trailers would finally be relocated, um, and it does include a new two-story town hall building, that will include a new council chambers, a lobby, public counter, space for all the different town departments in one building, including police, planning, building, public works, and administration. Um, the post office function will also be retained in the new building. Um, and then the project, as I indicated, retains this building here, and also includes a new library, um, along that alignment there, kind of similar to where the library's located this time. So, the first item to review is the tentative parcel map. The project involves the combining of six existing parcels into one contiguous parcel, and it includes the abandonment of the existing rightaways, and converting those public roads into private roads. It'd be similar to the park, where it's all private roads, but the public has the right to access through those. So, Dickinsonsville Station Lane, um, you would still be able to, in the after condition, traverse through the site from Maple through, um, to Ferrox Lane, so that would be maintained as a driveway through the site. Asheville Road, um, would terminate a bit, but you would be able to kind of snake along the side of the property and be able to exit out Ferrox Lane. So, those two public rights of way would be abandoned, and would be replaced with just private roadways. Uh, a lot of the easements also need to be relocated for the utility companies, um, and public work staff and the engineer team has a meeting with all those utility companies to find out exactly how much space they need, where that needs to be located, and one of the larger is, um, S F P U C, Forest Main that runs through the site, and that's a pretty significant, um, utility that needs to be relocated slightly and maintained, and it's very large, so that took quite a bit of effort. So, as I indicated, the, in the staff report, this merger does comply with all of the town's subdivision regulations, and, uh, staff does recommend, you recommend it forward to city council. The next item I'd like to talk about is the tree removal, and what you had in your packet, a whole lot of plans that showed the, um, trees to be removed with the existing site plan, and then showed you the new site plan, and what I emailed this afternoon, have in front of you and have on the screen now, is an overlay of the trees to be removed with the new site plan, so you can kind of better understand how that lays out without flipping sheets. There's also extra copies, if any member of the public would like to look at that. Um, so if we just want to start, I'm gonna put my glasses on for this one.
Yeah, could you, no, could you tell us the tree numbers that you?
Maybe I could just walk through tree by tree?
Yeah.
If you want to start on the right, or the southern portion of the site, um, tree number 60 is in that area of the reading garden path, and, um, this tree, if you saw it on the site inspection, is one where there was a limb failure, kind of in the middle, and so that's been cut, and so that's recommended for removals, tree number 60, it's a carob tree, recent limb failure. Just above that is tree number 120, and that is, um, within that new roadway alignment, and that is a coast live oak, and it's within the new roadway alignment, as is tree number 119, right next to that, also a coast live oak.
And both, that, all those, item, uh, tree number 60 is, has some issues, 120 and 119 are, as trees, are in good condition?
As trees, they're in good condition, the issue, there's, there's some lean, I guess, or, uh, there's a little more weight on one side of the tree, but generally, they're in good condition, the issue is with the new roadway alignment, they would be in the way of that. And then, just above that is tree number 63, and that is a valley oak, um, also in the way for the new roadway associated with the corporation yard.
You said 63?
63, just above, 119 and 120.
Okay.
And then, moving to the left a bit, is tree number 115, and that is also coast live oak, also in pretty good condition, but in the way of, um, parking spaces associated with the library. Just below that, is tree number 58, also a coast live oak. This one, we saw was, um, didn't have good form, so poor form, um, and is, our town arborist is comfortable with removal of that tree due to the condition of it, but that is within the library footprint. Okay, and then if we move further to the left, where that area says community porch, it's kind of shaded area, is tree number 55. And the concern for that one is, it's very close to the community porch, close to the library in the footings, um, the project arborist noted that it's suppressed, um, and it's located close to those buildings. Moving up the plan from there, is tree number 104.
That's the smaller circle.
And that's that, yeah, the smaller circle. That one, our town arborist noted it does have a severe lean, recommended for removal, and that's within, it's really close to kind of the edge of the roadway there, how it gets realigned. And then if you go over a little to the left, is tree number 102, and that is, um, the plan indicates it's in the way of road and parking, it does have a slight lean, good vigor. There's a few of these trees that, you know, I talked to the city manager, and the project manager, and the architect, when they prepared these plans, there was concern about, you know, can we save the, all these trees? And so, some of these, when it was laid out, you know, some of them didn't have great condition, and due to the improvements, would be in the way, so some of the trees, if you were to save it, it might impact another tree, because you have to realign the walkway, we need to make sure we have ADA path of travel throughout the site, it may impact the roadway. So, I have a commitment from staff that, you know, through the phase of the project, if there's a tree that can be saved, it will be saved, but at this point, this is the analysis that they've completed, and they've done a pretty, I think, conservative analysis, trying to save whatever tree they can through the design review process, um, but this is one, and as well as another one that I'll get to, that they do want to see in, in the field if it can be saved, but at this point, it's recommended, or requested for removal. And then just above that is tree 101.
What is that, what's the small circle?
That's another small circle, right, just above it, to the left a tad.
Yeah.
The project arborist noted that it has good vigor, fair form, kind of shaded by that 102, and our town arborist did note it was one-sided, but didn't, was concerned about its removal due to the condition. And that's also in the way of the walkway, and if that one was to save, then the one adjacent to it would probably be impacted, because the walkway would need to be reconfigured, and it's also very close to the, um, ADA parking space, and we need to make sure we have the path of travel there. Um, just above that would be tree number 65. I have a problem.
65 must have run off the page, huh?
What happened to 65? Let me come back to that one.
65?
Yeah.
It's not on the list.
65 is no longer, is no longer in town, it failed.
It what? Oh, it already, is the one that failed? Thank you.
It's why it's on the list.
Phew, that one's already come down.
Nobody pushed it, right?
Okay. All right, um, thank you so much. So, moving to the left, I've got a smaller tree, number 92, coast oak, that's within the garden path, it's also, and it's a little hard to see on this, but maybe you can see it, um, pop above, that grayed-out shaded line is the relocated S F P U C water line, so it's also in the way of the new water line, as is, the tree next to it is in the way of the roadway and the water line, which is tree number 66. So, those two trees, you know, maybe the garden path can be moved around it, but that water line cannot, so that's the real reason for that removal. Um, and then, as I indicated, 66 is to the left of it, the larger circle, that's in the way of the, um, roadway accessing the police department, is also in the way of the new S F P U C water line. And then, just above that is number 67, um, that's a valley oak, also in way of the roadway accessing the PD. Moving to the left of 67 is tree number 70, and that's in the way of a small, um, building that would be used for PD, and that tree is a valley oak. It does have some rot, and our town arborist does support the removal due to the condition of the tree.
Does support?
Yes.
That's number 70?
Due to the condition, 70, mhm.
That, that's different than what you report, right?
Did I miss a number there?
It says it, it says good form, vigor, blah, 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 I can't recommend a street for removal due to the crown rot. At least that's what mine says.
Mine says crown not, crown not recommend, oh, recommend.
And then, uh, above that is tree number 69. This one's just not in great condition when you're out there looking at it, there's been some dieback in the limbs, decay at the base.
Yeah.
Okay, so now I'm gonna go way down to the bottom of the page, where it says police parking, and this is where.
The smaller circle there.
Yeah, the smaller circle is number 89. And that's a redwood. Um, and that's very close to that parking area, and 76 is the other one.
It's not recommended, but, or was, sorry, or was, that's?
It's in good health.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then 76 is one that, um, we're taking another good look at, so I did have a conversation with the adjacent property owner, as well as, um, our public work staff, and we're gonna take a look at 76 to see if that one can be saved, um, because it does provide nice screening for that adjacent property owner. So, although we're requesting, the, the town is requesting removal at this point, that might be one that gets preserved through the course of construction. And then 78 is just above it, and you can see that one's very close to the roadway, as well as the town hall, and it's much larger, valley oak, um, and so that one's also requested for removal. So, I think I've made it all the way through the site, yes. So, the, the trees requested for removal, there's a total of 18, and, um, the applicant, I don't even know who to call the applicant, anyway, the town's committed to replacing those, with 18 replacement trees, consisting of 10 coast live oaks and eight valley oaks, all in 48-inch box size. And also, I have this evening Rick Smeltzer, who's our project manager with engineering, and also the local architect for this evening, so they would be happy to answer any questions you have, or expand on the conversation at all. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. All right, any, any questions to staff on that?
Have any decisions been made, um, regarding replacements of the replacement trees?
There is a landscape plan that was included in the packet for the replacement trees, yeah, and the landscape architect can run through that if you'd like.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's okay.
Is any of the healthy trees eligible for relocation?
They are looking at, can some of them be relocated, um, I know, we've always taken a conservative stance, that if somebody wanted to relocate a tree, we still called it a removal, because we obviously cannot guarantee that that tree would be able to survive, but yes, they're looking at a few to see if they can relocate them.
All right, so, any other questions?
No.
So, I, I just want to do a sort of a, sort of a call my home summary for a second, just to make sure that we understand the numbering. So, the way I have it, to make sure I'm correct, the items that, the trees that, of the 18 trees, the trees that are recommended to be removed based on their condition.
On condition only, right.
58, 60, 65, which is already down, 69, 70, and 104, are there any others that I missed?
No, that's all.
One, two, three, four, five, six, 18 are in that category. One, two, three, four, five, six, the eighteen are in that category.
Are in the poor, poor condition category, right.
And the rest, the other twelve, eleven of the twelve are being recommended removed, and one, number seventy-six, is being evaluated based on screening per neighbor.
Correct, but requested for removal at this time.
Right, right. So that leaves one, two, three, four, five, six, so that'll leave us twelve to evaluate for, for this discussion beyond the recommended removal. I mean, I'm trying to break it out into the ones that we, we know we can legitimately remove, like, and then focusing on the twelve remaining that, that are the ones that we need to make some kind of ID recommendation on. All right, that's, that's all, that's all I have. So I'll come back to that, I'll use that as a framework for my thinking later on, so nobody else can use that. Yeah, you'd see that framework, but that makes me say as close as I get.
All right, anything else then, or for staff?
That's it for staff.
All right, then I'll go ahead and open up, any other?
I do actually, so I think what would be helpful, one, just kind of to frame, to continue to frame this.
Yeah.
Is, this is an extra step that the town went through to try to vet this process publicly.
Right.
But just as if someone was building a house and they had a, you know, a structure that was going where an existing tree was within the building envelope.
Right.
I think that's important, maybe to explain just in general, but I think it would be great, I know it would help me. My guess is a lot more has happened on the landscape side than we realized to try to avoid, meaning the list probably instead of being eighteen could have been thirty. And so there's always that way, how do we weigh this, because no, not one of us anywhere in here wants to take one tree out.
Right.
But I think the question really is, what did they do briefly to try to move this kind of a, you know, etch or set around to try and make sure that this was minimal?
Right.
If I may just add to it, I think you're absolutely right, and I think a really important function that you guys have always served is to keep people honest. And so by the time somebody asks you to remove a tree, you, you vet it, you know, what alternatives did you consider, and that's a very important function.
Right. So on that note, we'll listen to, to the audience now for a while, but then I would ask whether or not it would be appropriate for Mr. Chinelli to come back in. We ask him questions about his role on the committee, because he of this commission, who would have the most information on that?
The only problem is unless he's authorized to speak on behalf of the CCAC, we usually ask that it's the chairperson who represents them. I think it would be a little problematic, but we could, if you needed to, we can always continue this to a future meeting and have the CCAC come in and talk about how they got where they are now.
Yeah.
Absolutely, that's option.
All right, that's better, safer way to do it.
We also have the project landscape architect here.
Oh, yeah, okay, good, that.
That should be great, just to hear the problem.
So let's, let's hear, let's hear from the, from the. So you understand what we're trying to accomplish, right?
Save as many as possible.
Well, that, we're also trying to understand the process that got us to the point where these are the ones that ended up being on the list.
Yeah, I mean, what did you, what did you do to the plan to kind of get to where we are today?
So I'm representing, representing landscape, so I cannot say much about the, of the architect and the civil engineers work together. But what I understand is there was lots of limitation of how to lay out the building and the road due to easement issues and some parking requirements with the police program and all those. And that's why they are, they looked at very different. I remember they go through lots of options to what's the most, less.
The lowest impact.
Yeah, to those like existing heritage trees, and that's the plan that they achieved. And within that, as you can see, there is only one tree that's proposed to be removed due to the landscape design. So we try to embrace all those heritage trees as much as possible. That was our role.
Okay, great.
And which ones are?
Yeah, that.
Well, it would be any of the ones that are.
Garden path tree that, I think Lisa already mentioned that there's a new water line that.
Of ninety-two.
Yeah, that's the only tree that we had to remove it. And then even with the tree number sixty, that's, has to be removed due to the stormwater management for the site.
Yeah, but, and that was a weak tree anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah, that too.
So that, so the ones that you know, Ed, from the, from the landscape perspective, the ninety-two was because of the water line?
Yeah, if we don't have that issue, we can try to redesign and save that tree, but that was the, the thing that we have to save it.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I actually do. So, so I'm looking at this plan, and with my eyes especially, it's hard to see kind of the gray areas in terms of what's new. If you're, if this is the site, you know, the way it sits today, and this, and so, so this might be a tough conversation because we don't have a civilian here, and we don't have, are you an arborist?
No, I'm not.
What do you think?
I'm a civil engineer.
Oh, you, we do have a civil, okay, okay, great. That's maybe even better then, is to talk about what the existing is relative to this site, how many trees we actually have, because it looks to me like we've got a lot of big trees sitting out there, but they're shaded so lightly that I don't see all of them. So the question really is, is because even if you look at the list, a lot of them in terms of diameter, you know, fourteen, sixteen, nineteen, whatever it might be on here, again, not to make a position on whether I want or don't want to take those out. I think there's no, that's not even a question, I think, to the extent we can avoid them or have figured out a way to avoid most of them. And these are the, unfortunately, the ones that did make the cut. That would be great to know from a civil standpoint, since I assume you're involved in that. Kind of, I mean, not necessarily at the same time, I'm just saying eventually, so.
True. All right, any other questions?
Well, was there anything else I'm asking, do you want to cover that you?
No, I think we're, well, just covered.
Okay, good, all right. So let's go over to the civil, civil engineering side of things. I've got bigger maps you want to see.
Hi, my name is Rick Smeltzer. I'm with Interwest Consulting, working on the project, along with Marty Hammond, who's the city engineer. I've been on the project for a shorter time, and I know this project's been in, in production for quite a while. So I don't have a lot of the history, but as a civil engineer, let me give you what I know. First of all, when you have a project like this, you, you've seen a lot of easements tonight, utility easements, easements for roadways and so forth. Building structures cannot sit on those easements, so there's a constraint. So you've got all these easements, and you saw them, they're all over the site. So we're dealing with a building, a, a number of buildings that have to be set, positioned outside those easements, that's number one. Number two, you've got setbacks. You've got property lines and setbacks. Planners know all about that, and they could talk to you about that as well. But at the same time, we're positioning the buildings away from the property lines, we have to do that, as well as away from these easements. We're also looking at connectivity between the buildings. We, we went through the master plan, as was mentioned earlier. We have this master plan, we're working with the architect, we're making sure that each building is connected properly with the roadways and the pathways and so forth that you saw tonight. So a lot of work has gone into this, and I can tell you that we've actually moved the buildings several times during the design process. And now we are at that final stage, ready to go out to bid shortly, and these buildings are positioned almost to the foot of where they can be. We can't move the buildings, we can't move the roadways, they're where they need to be to avoid the various easements and so forth that I just talked about. So then we have the trees that we're dealing with. And tonight we were looking at the heritage trees. What we're trying to show you tonight is the reasons why those trees have to be removed, because they're within an easement of a utility that we talked about, they're within one of those roads that we had to make that connectivity with, they're within a building footprint, the buildings can't move, they're within those footprints. So now we're at the point where we've done our homework as far as establishing the locations of these roadways, trees, and easements, and we're down, now talking about the trees that need to be removed. So that's essentially how we got where we are today.
Thank you. All right, well, that's, that's staff overview and questions from the commissions. Any other questions? All right, then I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for anyone who wants to come forward and talk on the public.
Hi, my name's Nancy Colby.
That's a problem, okay.
I live at forty-five Linden, and I've grown up in Atherton and moved back here twenty years ago. And I love Atherton mainly because of the big trees coming into town, you get that sense of the shade and being sheltered. So I would like to save as many trees as we can. I have a, a document here prepared for you with eight trees that I am particularly interested in.
Okay.
Not sure who to give that to.
Not sure who you are.
Okay. And my map, which, I'm glad we've got this map, thanks. That helps. So the ones that I'm interested in are, and I guess I want the town to set a good example because we're asking homeowners to protect trees, so I think the town needs to do that as well. So the ones I'm interested in are like one twenty, one nineteen, sixty-three.
Okay, those, those on the right-hand side.
The ones on the right-hand side. I would hope that we could do some arrangement with the road or the parking to save those. And part of my concern is saving even smaller trees. If we look at the list, tonight we're just talking about eighteen trees, but there's actually like over sixty trees that are getting taken down. That's a lot of trees, and we need to protect the small ones as well as the large ones, because those small ones are our future. Those, those are going to be our heritage trees someday. So that's why I made this whole list, there's a lot more than eighteen that are going to get chopped.
All right, so the only ones we're working with tonight are those heritage trees.
Okay, but I want you to have that context, because it's not just eighteen that are going to get cut down, you're going to see a lot of destruction around here. So sixty-three and one twenty, one nineteen, and then also I'm hoping we can save. Okay, sixty-seven. It's the one behind the construction, it's, it says it's, you know, near the parking, but it's right in the parking lot right now, right next to, you know, pavement and everything else is doing fine, it's a beautiful tree. Seventy-one is not in the heritage list, it's down by the train track, but I hope we can save that one, because the, the large tree, the seventy-two tree that's going to be saved, probably going to don't last very long, and seventy-one would replace that. And then seventy-six, the one that Lisa talked about maybe saving, the redwood near the property line. I would hope that we could make room for that near the road. And then also eighty-nine, the redwood near the property line, I think that's a beautiful tree, and I hope we can save that one. Ninety-two, there's ninety-two.
Ninety-two is not one of the heritage ones though, right?
Yes, yeah.
It's, it's that, that garden path one, that is sort of ironic that we would take the tree out for a garden path. So I hope that, you know, I didn't understand where the water line work was going, but I hope that there's a way to save that one. So you have the list of the trees that I'm particularly interested in, and I thank you for your consideration on that.
Can I ask you a question? So, so when you say that, that there's sixty trees, I get it, right, in terms of what those other ones are? And that's maybe, that's a good question for us and our arborist in terms of what the other forty-two are, and what kind of the thought process was on those, not necessarily all of them. And then secondly, what is it you like, when you pick those eight trees, why are they different than any other ten that we have on the great team?
I think they look better, and I think there's a chance that they could be saved because of where they are.
Okay, so, so yours was visual in terms of how they could make you feel, but then also you just looked around the site plan and said, hey, if there's an opportunity, here's a, here's a place that they seem like we could save them?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just curious if that was, if you really had another viewpoint, yeah.
All right, all right, anyone else? Thank you. Thank you for.
I'm John Sanders, I live at one fifty-six Hawthorne Drive, and I'm on the tree committee with Sally. I hope that doesn't keep me from speaking today.
No, no.
It's a conflict of interest, it seems to me it is my interest. I think I agree with most of what Sally said. There's one more tree that I would like to add to the saving trees. It's, tree, I think it's fifty-five, it's the one by the community porch, which is kind of, I don't know what a community porch is, but it sounds like it might be a large terrace, and I think as a large terrace, it would be lovely to be shaded by that great big wonderful tree that's right there. And I can think of nothing better than sitting under that tree and reading a book on the porch. So I think that might be a tree that was a tiny bit of looking after, could be saved. Also, we had Rick DeGolia with us today as we looked at all the trees, and he did make comments all during our walk around that so many of our, our streets do have trees in them, and we go around them, and that's what makes Atherton a beautiful town, is that we don't necessarily go down straight streets, but every once in a while, the road does curve to go around a, a tree. And we can do that, and I think also you would find in a parking lot, everybody would want to be parking near the tree to be in the shade. Thank you.
So I just want to go over the numbers. Okay, go ahead.
I didn't know if the commission.
That's, that was my job to look up, you're here.
Okay, okay. My name is Matthew Chandler, just Matt. I'm here, I have my family, we're, we're at seventy-six Fair Oaks. We're supportive of, of the project, we just wanted to raise some concerns, being next door neighbors, as you can see, we're actually the property line that's next to the relocated Ashfield Road, and just wanted, in the spirit of cooperation, to let the commission know, like, these concerns have already been actually raised and directed to, I actually had a conversation with Lisa and Marty Hammond, the project manager. So this isn't really a surprise, just wanted to, just be on the record with our concerns. Wanted to talk about two trees, really, one is just a shame.
Point where you are.
Sure, we are right here in this lower corner.
Okay.
So the two trees we're going to talk about are fairly obvious, right, next door neighbors. Seventy-eight is a.
Go ahead, go back, so we catch you on the, on the recording.
Of course, my mistake. Now seventy-eight is a healthy tree, it's just, it's a shame, it's, it's where the building, so we, we, we just wanted to bring that up for context purposes. It does provide, it's a beautiful oak tree that provides like some privacy. I did also, so the, the tree that we were going to ask to see for, ask for reconsideration was tree seventy-six, given that it's not quite on the roadway. It actually is another kind of privacy shield, and I just wanted to raise tree seventy-eight as context that we're losing the other ones. So it was really just an opportunity for us to provide context and just raise the concern with the, with the committee, the commission. I believe we've already talked to, like, Lisa and Marty, they're already talking to W R N S regarding whether or not they can, whether it can be saved. So I just wanted to, to raise, raise those as next door neighbors.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for coming out, and thank you for your approach. It's good, 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 that's good neighbor approach, thank you.
No, absolutely, we just, we're, we're going to be neighbors, so we want to be good neighbors. We do too.
All right, anyone, anyone else? All right, sounds like you've heard from everyone, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and bring it back to the commissions for discussion and direction or action. All right, so I, I just wanted to make sure I've got all the numbers right on the, on the ones that were brought up as potential to be talked about for savings. I've got fifty-five, sixty-three, sixty-seven, seventy-six, eighty-nine, one nineteen, and one twenty, and then with a, with an asterisk around seventy-eight just to understand what the, the shielding that it currently has. So are there any other, other numbers that I missed?
I started at eighty-nine, ninety-two.
Eighty, eighty, I, I, eighty-nine, I, ninety-two, I missed ninety-two, that's the one I missed. All right, so fifty-five, sixty-three, sixty-seven, seventy-six, eighty-nine, ninety-two, one nineteen, one twenty, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, right? All right. And. All right, so I, I, let me, let me start it off a little bit and see what happens.
Yeah.
So, a, a question for staff.
I do, sure.
Yeah, on sixty-seven. On sixty-seven. Okay, so on the map, I didn't understand why sixty-seven has, would have to be targeted. And I, and ninety-two was also part of that. I knew ninety-two was the water, the waterway. One, I don't understand why the waterway can't be regarded, but you see, you might be able to tell me that or not. And sixty-seven, why was sixty-seven on the list?
Sixty-seven roadway. The driveway to the police department, secure parking lot.
Oh, I see. That's where they turn in down that fence parking lot. All right.
And then sixty-six and ninety-two are on the S F P U C water line.
Yeah.
The relocated. And that's been, I don't know, two years of conversation with S F P U C. And Jen could probably expand on those very tense discussions.
That's a really big issue. There, it's unclear who, if they have any, if they don't have, we're looking at it with records. It's in a really a penderous box and it is still being negotiated.
And that water line has really driven this design significantly. I mean, there was earlier versions that wanted the building to be much higher on the site, but that water line really drove this design.
I've got a question on the vis- visibility on the end of the building near seventy-eight. So it's different. So we have a two-story building looking towards a property. And right now seventy-six would shield it. How much visibility would be from the second floor into the homeowner's backyard without the trees? So we're in trouble with this, just as we would any property owner. I would say whatever plan we come up with, we want some kind of mitigation of that impact. And so seventy-eight were to go down, that's all I'd want for sure, seventy-six to stay up.
Are there windows on that?
I would, that's what I was going, I thought there were windows all the way around the building, but maybe not.
I'm sure there are.
Yeah, that's right.
So can we look at the back there?
Yeah. Go ahead.
I can add a little more insight to seventy-eight and seventy-six.
Okay.
We are looking at seventy-six, as was mentioned in the staff report and whatnot, because the neighbors requested that and it's, it is away from the roadway. Seventy-eight, on the other hand, is right on the roadway or adjacent to the roadway. And we see problems, especially with emergency vehicle access through there. The road is not as wide as it, you know, could be. And we certainly can't make the road narrower or move it. So we're stuck with having to remove the tree. Really, it's more of an access point here for emergency vehicles until we're looking at that point.
So there would be some second story windows. That area is designated for Sally's office. So she'll have a view as well as the associate engineer and the public work supervisor. There's just five windows there and then a private office at the end and then there's the stair tower on one side. I guess the good thing about town hall is not a lot of town employees work past five P M. at that portion of the building. The police department's on the other side where you're going to see a lot more activity. So that's closer to the train and away from the residents.
Right. Okay, and then I'm going to keep on going. Sixty, so tell me is that the right way into parking lot? And we look at why the parking, why the access must be on that end, I assume, right?
Right, there just wasn't enough room to have the police department parking lot like it is now where you can turn around. So it's a through lot. You have an entrance and exit and you cannot, there's not enough room for the vehicles to really.
Yeah.
So that's why they want to have both ways and then, you know, depending on which way they need to report also.
Yeah. Otherwise they have to back out. All right, that's playing sixty-seven to me now. Sixty-three, one nineteen, and one twenty. I think, so sixty-three is in the roadway?
For the corporation yard.
And one eighteen, one nineteen, and one twenty?
Are in the newly realigned Dickinson Lane roadway.
Yeah, they look like they're in the, they look, they look off the roadway to me, but maybe I got a bigger map. Did you, do you, you have one on that overhead?
What you're seeing, I think what's drawing your attention is the easement there for the water main. The roadway is actually, it does go right, right through the middle of those trees, the realigned roadway. What's drawing your attention to the, it's not really the roadway, it's the easement there, but the roadway does curve now, has a gentle curve through there. And the road does go through those two trees. And at this point, cannot be realigned.
I think that might be a better view of the roadway without the easement kind of distracting.
I got it. Okay, so one nineteen, one twenty are right in the middle of the curve there.
They're right in this area, I believe.
Yeah.
And then sixty, whatever.
Sixty-three is up higher.
Was up over here and this is where that corporation yard access road is back here.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are you, do you, are you on the process of going down Sally a couple things?
Yeah, let me do one more. Let me, now eighty-nine, how many was eighty-nine is, why is it, why wouldn't eighty-nine work?
It's really close to the parking space, police parking.
Is that required spots for, for number of feet spots or what is the story?
It looks like the landscape, it's hard to tell what that is.
It's right at the parking school, but it's too close to the curb line that we can't really quite save that tree.
Uh, so, so there's enough space to remove that, those two spots back as soon as.
Well, that's, um, they're not by the civil engineer without a motor cycle.
Yeah.
I think the motorcycles need to be secured.
There must be like a requirement for the numbers and that's how we're going to.
Right.
Well, no, you're right on the mark there. That's a, that's one I think during construction,
Yeah.
we'll take a close look at.
Yeah.
And I think what you're, what you're saying is feasible, if it makes sense to move those, that parking over to avoid that. I think that's one of those trees that is questionable. So we'll take a look at that during construction.
All right. And the last one I've got then is fifty-five. So fifty-five, so fifty-five looks like it's right over here somewhere.
Right here, the community porch.
Should be. Yeah. And so, so is that, that's a part of the library, isn't it? And is that the entrance to the library?
So the fifty-five is right at the entrance of the new library and that's a sloped walkway. And next to it, that's a community porch, that's a big deck. So the building is set a lot higher than the existing grade. So that tree is, will be very challenging to save.
And the deck size is based on what?
Deck, you mean the dimension?
Yeah.
It's based on the outdoor proven that the architects been planning. So that's the main entrance of the building. And then you can also access this big deck, which they're also embracing the existing tree here. And they're at the same elevation as the building, which is, will be a lot more than this building finished floor elevation.
Okay, all right, I'm not, I'm not quite as old on that one.
Yeah, it's right, if you look at the floor plan A dash one one one, I can pull it up. It's also, like she was saying, in the way of kind of that entry portal. And you're saying it needs to slope up to that because of the great difference that that sheet.
The building is probably two feet or higher than where the number fifty-five tree is at. And it's also in the way of circulation that this building needs to provide. I think the tree fifty-five is somewhere here, right here.
Sorry, I keep moving that on you. Can you reach it still?
So that's the access that the building has to provide for people to, able to get in. And I'm sure there was a lot of coordination between the civil engineer and then the architect regarding the setting up the elevation of the building and then it was, had to be set a certain level to work with the storm drain and everything. So unfortunately, that tree is first in the way of the circulation and the program of the building and also the elevation is the issue.
Okay, all right, that's all I had.
I did, so, so let's, Sally, I want to ask you that. From a civil standpoint, of the eighteen of which we know, separate of the sixty trees, if we take that question for Sally. Of the eighteen, I think we just found that six were already dead or on their way or, or recommended for removal or recommended that they wouldn't be approached for removal, I guess. Of the other twelve that are there, how many are for easement reasons or driveway reasons that are, the driveways are placed there for emergency reasons or because the driveways can only go there because the easements force them? Or is the answer all? Because I don't think it's all, but I do think there's a bunch of them.
It's a bunch of them.
Yeah.
I'd say probably most of them. I didn't do a count. You're asking for a count. I didn't do a count. Let's do it the other way. There's probably two or three, as you were just, we were going through this a moment ago, that are in that questionable spot where during construction again, because of their location and these plans, once we get out there and start staking the ground, when we get stakes in the ground, we've got a contractor out there and we're working on this project. If we can do something for those two or three trees, we will. But I can't tell you today that that's possible. That's why we're here basically recommending removal, as we're saying, but during construction, we'll take a look at those two or three trees.
So in other words, you'll go, you'll put tree protection around those two or three and see how it goes. But for sure, the other, whatever that number comes out to, let's call it nine or ten, will be gone.
That's right.
Okay, all right, that's great. Okay, thanks. And then, and then secondly, for Sally on the, just so we're all familiar with it, on the comment about sixty, one, do you agree with that? And two, are they small trees that we don't have in a code that has, that may or may not have protection or are they more, the scrubs that we see kind of along the street here that, you know, they're multi-grans, they're three or four inch type of, have always crowded each other out? What is, what kind of, what do those make up?
So I wasn't aware of the sixty trees. I only was, was told to review eighteen heritage trees. So I don't want to speak too much on the other trees that will be removed. It's my understanding that anything that's under fifteen inches diameter will be removed. However, I don't know that for sure, so I really can't make a comment.
Okay, I'm, I'm cool with that, but I, mine is one, when it gets dropped in the public record, I think we should all talk about it and at least understand it. Secondly, from the standpoint of those trees, when you say that, if it's under fifteen inch, you're not reviewing it. Is that something that we're automatically going through the site and taking anything out that's under fifteen inches? It just happens to be these that might be an easement or a roadway or what have you? Is that, should we say, think of it that way?
Yeah, and I think a lot of them unfortunately are the ones that are kind of adjacent right now to this roadway and the permit center and how that roadway gets realigned. Those are the smaller trees. So if you see on the plan, it's the little dots that are in that new roadway would represent those smaller ones. And that's the majority of where they are.
That's what I guess too.
Yeah.
So.
There's a little bit of thinning out on the redwoods here as well.
Sure.
Because those were overplanted.
So my other question to you, this is for red, how long has, has the designer foot been going, not only for W R R N S, but for the symbols? I don't think, I mean, I'm fortunate in this case because we're, we are a builder of rock and we do everything possible and we own and buy sites that we can showcase trees from, let alone our commercial sites. But on this particular case, I don't think most people know from an educational standpoint, how much work goes in as a civil and as an architect to try to preserve everything, but also how long this process has been going? Is this a two year, five years, ten years?
Well, so four year from when the civic center advisory committee was established and the architect was first brought on board. At that level, there was a little bit of a higher level design. And then I think probably two or three years ago is when the civil really got involved at a higher level to really get down in the details with the architect. So well over two years.
I'm going through the inventory of the numbers we have here. I call it nineteen. So, so.
Which list are you going off of?
Maybe, oh, I know.
Is it that sixty?
It's eighteen plus sixty-five.
The one that, yeah, yeah.
Good, so I, I, I don't.
It's a ghost tree.
Yeah, yeah. So tell me about one oh one and one oh two. I know what it says, they're in the roadway, but I'm not seeing nothing on that. And one oh one looks to me like one that would sort of get worse and worse looking over time because of the shade that it gets. So tell me, tell me one oh one and one oh two again, because it looks to me like they're in the end of the parking, not the roadway. Something about the water line on the one oh one.
So yeah, one oh two is very close to that ADA spot. And I think it's kind of too close to that curb line that they've established for the roadway. And then one oh two is close to the water line. I don't know what the root condition would be in relation to the water line. It's also in that path area.
So, is it better?
Yeah, go, either way, yeah.
I can't, I can't see that from the lot, so if you guys can't see that, just pick one and other.
So, um, one oh two is like.
Right there, yeah.
Right here, which is seven feet away from this line and which we have to provide a access path around the parking, not especially in front of the handicapped parking. To that, then this will have a very limited area of root zone. Because this part, once we, we have to excavate and then that will have to touch the root and that will affect the tree.
Okay.
Also, the other thing is with the new, um, revised building plan, this likely is somewhere closer to the tree.
Yeah.
So that also gives not enough room for this tree to have.
Right.
Yeah.
And one oh one, which is covered by it right now.
Yeah, one oh one is right at the parking stall line.
All right. All right.
Yeah.
So, any other questions? Okay, so, so let me run down the inventory that I went through, all right? So I have, I can follow the logic and make sense of the following trees of being, being removed based on the requirements of the plan. And those numbers are, and I'll do it, there's two different groups. One is because of their, the fact that they were, they were poor. So the ones that were poor that I'm comfortable with removing are sixty-three, sixty-six, sixty-seven, seventy-eight, one fifteen, one nineteen, and one twenty. Poor, those, those are the ones that arborists recommended as going. Is that correct?
Sixty-three is, I didn't recommend.
Oh, see, okay.
Not recommending.
All right, sixty-three is on the other list then. All right, so then in terms of, yes, you got it. All right, so then, so the numbers again on that one, sixty-six, sixty-seven, seventy-eight, one fifteen, one nineteen, and one twenty.
Sixty-six is not recommending.
Can you go back a little? The one nineteen and one twenty you said are recommended or are not for real?
They're.
They're not recommended.
No, but the one nineteen, one twenty were not recommended.
All right, so give me the ones that are recommended. I'm trying to, I'm trying to come up with the ones that were.
It's Sally's memo, I think, had them summarized.
Yeah, I know, but I'm trying to get it from one spot, so.
So fifty-eight.
Oh, fifty-eight, sixty, sixty-five, is that?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine.
Seventy-eight, one oh four.
All right, good. So here's the ones, here's the ones based on our discussion.
So here's the ones, here's the ones, based on our discussion, I'll let you say it this way. The ones I would recommend that we can, that we have the council come up with a way to save, let me do it that way, would be fifty-five, seventy-six, eighty-nine, and ninety-two. All right?
Fifty-five.
Seventy-six is the screening one, eighty-nine is the redwood down by the parking, the parking area.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five is the one over by the patio or whatever we're calling that. Um, and, um, and ninety-two.
Is on top of the water line.
Is on top of the water line, right. Well, and, and the reason I'm saying that is that, that I'm, we're still working on, I want to keep it in that sort of like, wait a minute, why do we really have to do that, those, the thing, right? So, those four to me seem reasonable to say, let's do everything that we can double check to make sure that those don't need to be saved or can't be saved. All the other ones, based on our conversation tonight, I'm comfortable with the explanation I, that we received about why they're on the list and why they would have to be moved. The, the ones that, the other thing I would be saying is that I really would want to make sure the end of the building for seventy-eight is has some kind of follow-on mitigation for the neighbor, if that's possible.
Fifty-five seemed to me to have more than one or two reasons for removing, removing, I think there were three that you stated having to do with the grade, the height, and the third. So that, I was trying to keep track of how many reasons
Yeah.
to remove for each tree, and that one had the most votes.
Yeah, the reason, here, here's why fifty-five made my cut to look at one more time is the arbitrary nature of the size of the porch.
Of the porch, okay.
Right? So, so if any, if any, if any one came before and said, hey, I'd like to have my porch go this far over and we, we said, oh, you know, that's a nice design, but wait a minute, let's prioritize the tree, so cut your porch back five feet. Right, that's what I would say to any homeowner.
Is it arbitrary though, or is it based on some ratio to persons, to square footage, to height?
Yeah, well, that's why, yeah, so that's why I put it on the list of like double checking, yeah.
Yeah. Look, okay.
Because it says porch, it doesn't say, you know, mandatory because of that, you gotta have access or anything else to me, it, that's, that, of all, of all the design choices to me that, of this, okay, why the roadway? Roadway because we wanted to, uh, to keep the floodgates there and we have to keep this setback and we have all the easements, that made sense to me. That one's, unless there's a, somebody comes up and says, by the way, there's an easement that required that porch to be that size or there's an access that required that porch to be that size, no, no one tonight had an answer to that, to why the search of porch.
I think it was access for the entryway to the building.
Because of the choice.
So the, yeah, the grade for the entry here, and then also they're trying to have kind of this indoor-outdoor space. So if you see here, all these doors open from the library out onto that community porch, the connectivity with the inside and the outside.
Right.
So this entire space would open up.
Yeah, so that, that last set of doors is, is in my mind, really, I mean.
It's just the, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna say the choice. So that's why I had it on the list, but I, I understand. Good.
I should go to Sally. So are you talking about this set of doors?
Yes.
Hmm, I see more problem of accessing from here to there, cause the tree's right here.
Yeah.
So I'm not too concerned about this part, it's more about from here getting down there, it's
Changing grade, do you know how, how high the, uh, top of finished floor?
Changing grade is the problem. This, I remember. So from here, it's one hundred, one point eight two and you have to go down to ninety-eight point eighty or something, eight, oh. So it's quite a slope, it's, um,
Three, four feet, I'm saying?
Five, five percent, a little less than five percent slope. So that tree should be, I believe it's a lot lower than building finish floor. So that's where the challenge happens, because when the tree is low, then you have to build up something on top to cover that part.
How close is it to that exterior wall, too?
It's pretty, well, it's pretty close to the edge of the.
It's, it's, it's like right here beyond, a little bit.
I mean, that's, that's, so we get into the civil, that's, that's, that's where this gets tricky for us to be recommending things because I, as much as Sally, that our, our person making the comments early on, I mean, I'd love to save all these. But, you know, I, one, we're replacing them with eighteen forty-eight, forty-eight inch box trees, which are gonna be beautiful at some point. I mean, maybe there's, maybe we want to talk about, you know, like we would with a homeowner, you know, sort of have, you know, add two trees for everyone to take out, or something along those lines, which I assume we have the purview to do or especially, I don't, what I also don't want to do is alienate the tree committee, cause I think they do a great job. I love hearing what they're doing, but I, we, we feel the same. So this is a little tricky in that we're, I want to be careful because the civil folks, if they're telling us that it's hard now for them to be moving things around and that they've been tweaking and moving for two years. I know what goes into that and it's not a simple exercise for them to come back and say, oh, yeah, we just found this. My guess is they, this is all modeled on a computer and they've been moving this around, trying to set these buildings out. So I, I, to your point, if you want to dump it with the council and say, if, if these are, are, if there's alternatives, we'd like you guys to consider, that's great. Well, that's, that's what I'm thinking, is those four to me seem, seem to be that, you know, either, either it's matching what, what this staff has been looking at as optional. But ninety-two, eighty-nine, seventy-six are all like, hey, can we, can we look at how this really plays out? So put it out on the radar screen that those are different. And fifty-five in my mind, I haven't, I haven't heard any, any answer other than, oh, it's the design that's driving it, all right? And if a homeowner came up and said, hey, it's, our design of our platform of our footprint is saying that we shouldn't move this, we would say, then why did you choose that platform? Why did you choo- choose that, so that, that, that framing? So that's, that's the only reason I included fifty-five is because I, I still don't understand why it was chosen, all right? And I understand why, if, I, I understand if that design is chosen, but the tree has to go. What I'm saying is why would that design chosen? All right, if I, if I have a cutoff in that one section of the, of the building or three feet moved, does that change anything? And if, if somebody says, hey, it can't be moved because of this, 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 then I'll be fine with that, but I haven't heard that answer yet. So, my gut, I, I don't, my gut tells me is by, by giving this to the council, they're not gonna have this, any different tools than we have or better tools. Are we better off acting on the, the parcel map tonight if that, and doing it in part, so, cause it's a two-part thing, right? Between the heritage tree removal permit and the, the, the tentative parcel map? Are we better off acting on that or postponing it or having, you know, a, a further conversation relative to these trees? I just don't know that dumping them into the council's lap is, is better, cause I just don't know that they're any more prepared than we are. Well, here's the thing, is it, is it, uh, what I'm thinking is, one, we can go ahead and do the parcel map and approve that. Yeah. And two, we can go forward and say, okay, we've re-reviewed this and all, and we would recommend that the, that the, that the the proposals for the trees, all these other trees other than these, these four be, be, be approved. And we would like them to, uh, to, if, if possible, have an understanding, at least for seventy-six, eighty-nine, ninety-two. Now, we can say fifty-five, we want to put back another, another ba- batch, that, that's fine. But seventy-six, eighty-nine, ninety-two seem to be, one ninety-two we know is, is in discussion with the, with the water root. Eighty-nine and, eighty-nine and seventy-six seem pretty straightforward to put into separate category. So what I'm trying to do is
Yeah.
just, just break out, just, to make it easier for them. So if they're gonna have a discussion, just say, okay, we're, we're comfortable with the other ones. These four, we'd like you to really sort of have a good discussion on, you know what I mean? So we moved it from eighteen to four.
Yeah, seventy-six and eighty-nine, I felt very comfortable with Rick's promise that if during construction, there appears to be any way to save those trees, then that will happen.
Yeah. Right, but, but from that, that's.
And how will that, how will that statement be different to council? Or how will council have a suggestion or idea different than, well, we won't know how to mitigate or how to save until we get in there and start work.
So there's two choices, one, we say, we say, we'd like to save these, we'd like to save these trees and they come back and they say, sorry, we can't, here's why. Or we say, go ahead, put them all together as, as these trees can go out, and then somebody says, ah, we, we tried, we looked at it and we didn't save them. So I want, uh, what I'm trying to do is create a speed bump for the ones that I want to save. So I'm saying, of the two approaches that we, we have, I want to save these if we can and, and then have them come back and say, no, we can't, rather than saying, we're okay with these and somebody comes back and says, oh, guess what? We discovered, we can save them. So that's, that's too, that's too releasing an approach for me on those particular trees. For a couple reasons, one, seventy-six because of the neighbors, eighty-nine because I just don't like knocking out redwoods randomly. We, you know, redwoods, we know have deeper roots and they're, you know, they're, they're straight down and they go straight up. And also, they're looking at the map, you know, three foot move and that kind of, and that parking spot, there's a lot of parking spot behind it, so it's, you know, make it compact spot rather than a full-sized spot or something like that. So somebody could think about how to, how to make that work. And, uh, and ninety-two, because we want to keep that on the list because it's still in, in discussion, the water one. Fifty-five, you know, I understand they're the crash analogy, that, that, that issue, none of the other ones that are on the list to me are, are, are are as sort of nebulous in terms of why, why they're, like sixty-seven, for example, when I first looked at the map, I said, what's wrong with sixty-seven? I looked at the pass-through approach. Okay, I got the answer on that, sixty-seven, okay, I understand sixty-seven.
It's a beautiful.
I know it is, I know it is, but I also want to, I don't want to please car running into it. Um, and so, and, and one nineteen, one twenty, I, I know how it would end if it comes up with the roadway and so I'm okay, I, I, I don't like the idea that they're going, but I understand why, because I don't want anybody to run into a tree. I'm not, I, I mentioned earlier, I'm not comfortable with the double access on these, on these two roads. I, I didn't mean, didn't mention, but I talked to staff about it. The double access on the road to me is really a problem on the left side of the map. Uh, and we'll, I will, at some point, I will want to talk about that, because that's a half a block difference with people, two different groups could go left and right at the same time. It's close to the railroad track and it's gonna back things up and it's just, now, I understand why the exit is that way, but I, the thing I hate about, uh, Alcina Realize is there's a, there's a curb cut every four point eight feet. You know, and, and so everybody's coming out and getting away in the way of everybody else. And that, they, these are pretty close to me and I understand why it is, but, you know, somebody gonna say, can we make this one right turn only? Or can we make, you know, other, other, other changes to make it work? So, I understand, this one roadway on the, on the, on the bottom of the, of the map to me is the most impactful in terms of some of the things that are an issue for me on the property. From a, from a, from a process, I mean, theoretically, people could cut through the park, not go out the other road, road because they want to go to the right and it's easier to do that than they, than going out on the street and going to the right. So I see all kinds of, uh, safety issues that are possible there. So there's a number of things on this left side of the map to, for me, from a traffic flow perspective, I'm not comfortable with. So, I don't know, I, I don't know if we'll ever get involved with that. And, but it's just, the idea of, the idea of conserving the trees, we are, we're on, we're on point for, so let's, let's figure out what we, what we can do. Okay, so you're, you're, are you making a, a motion? Is that what you're saying, or are you just having discussion and you want to put on? Yeah, that's, that's my discussion, yeah, that's my discussion point, so I just have to start earlier, rather than go last, is all. You then go last. I know, well, that's, I'm just curious, if you want to just make a motion? Oh, I can make a motion, well, let's, let's go ahead.
Just speak to this business about the porch and the tree, it's close to it, because you brought up the possibility to smallerize and decrease the size of the porch,
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
which is valid, and I wonder if that has been discussed before, if there's some reason it cannot be made smaller, if it's just an aesthetic indoor/outdoor, what's five feet different if it saves the tree, as far as I'm concerned, so I, I wonder if there's any.
So that's where fifty-five would be on my, yeah.
Fifty-five.
My guess, so you know, there's a lot of work going into it.
Yeah, I was just supposed to know.
That's what I'm saying, I'm sure these guys are, but I think you're right.
I was curious to know, uh, what and why that decision was made, and, and likewise, the traffic things that Eric has talked about are very valid. I'm sure they were discussed ob nauseam perhaps, but, uh, there again, it looks like the decision should have a little more explanation.
Yeah. All right, so, anyone else?
I'd find the, the proposal.
So, that's, we can do this in two parts, correct? On the one after. Is that all right? All right, all right, so is it gonna create nine years for staff to have those four broken out to be reevaluated?
No, no, it's fine.
Cause I'm all about not creating, right?
Yeah.
Nine years for you.
The bomb.
All right, all right, so, all right, I'll, we'll have to go with the first motion, motion first. Okay, so, uh, I moved the planning commission recommended city council approval of the tentative parcel map. So that we get another merger of six parcels into one parcel of the city center government, based on the findings and the reasons incorporated in the staff report. Just take that first, that, that first one as a first motion.
Second.
As a second, move in second, all right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, on the second one, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna look this out to give you some nod or whatever on what I do on this, this, the second part. But, and, and I have my, my own attorney, I'm lucky, I'm speed house, so I should be fine. So I moved that the planning commission find that the proposed removal of, of
Fourteen.
fourteen trees specified on the list, heritage tree, for the new city could all, could not be contrary to the proposed intent of the general plan and suggest that the city council closely evaluate this, the need to remove trees fifty-five, seventy-six, eighty-nine, and ninety-two.
So you're approving the removal of four, fourteen trees?
Yes. Yes.
So you said look at, do you want to say with the exception of? Like you're, you don't want to approve those four, right? You're not making a suggestion, you're saying.
Well, I, I'm, what I want to do is, you're right, I'm not, with, you know, what I want to do, it's a good question. Well, you can say it, I mean, you, you.
You can approve them now.
You can approve, yeah.
You can put conditions on some of them and not others.
Right.
Could be, we want them tree protected and then want you to make a decision at such time as you need to, because that at least protects them, they're not gonna come and cut them now in advance. You could treat them differently, or you could just say, no, they're not approved, the fourteen are, the four are not, and then they'd have to come back with another application. Or they could
Well, city council could.
The city council could appeal it to itself and approve it.
Approve it. Correct.
But at least it gives them more.
It's sending him, it's sending him a message and your information.
It says, maybe those would send a message.
Yes.
So we've already done the tentative map, so we got that out. So with this, if you've got the motion there, just carve those four out and say, either, yeah, we don't, we, we're just not approving all the, we're approving all of these four. Unless that's not what you want.
And then it would be up to council to figure out how they want to handle that, do they want to send it back for another application?
Yeah. Yeah.
Or do they want to go ahead and take it on appeal and consider what they ultimately want to do?
Well, staff, staff's gonna drive that anyway, because, you know, between Stephanie and Lisa, they're gonna step up and say, here's what the intent was and here's what they're trying to do, the staff report will have all. Yeah, I'm trying to leave them the most flexibility that's easiest to, to give them the flexibility.
The most flexibility, I think, would be to approve those four with a condition that says, we want them tree protected and treated like a tree you're gonna keep until such time, and again, at least in the discretion, so you have a little trust there. But at least that would say, hey, you need to take these extra seriously, these are ones, you know, try to work around, try to do everything.
All right, so, so let's do it that way.
It doesn't mean it's. Not perfect, can we say that we request to come back to planning commission to review their
I, I'm, I'm comfortable with their review, but after, as long as, here's what I'm trying to do. These four trees, I'd like them to really talk about and say, and is there a way to save, all right? So I'm okay, but if they say, we saw it and those four need to go, I'm okay with their responsibility, taking responsibility for that, right? All I want to do is make sure that they know that we looked at them all, fourteen of them were, made sense to us based on the plan. And four of them are conditionally approved for removal, provided they evaluate those four as well, is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Not conditionally approved?
No, you're approving them with, with conditions.
Yeah, we're approving, the fourteen are approved.
It's a big, very amorphous condition that they take it very seriously, they try to work with the neighbors
Right.
and, and the one that's in the water, I mean, that will be resolved, one or the other, and that, you know, if that's where the pipeline is, definitely they can do without that. But if that's not where it is, then they, then leave it.
So just, so, uh, so let me, I want to get on the record the wordy that I just said. So, so what did I just say?
The, the strap, the, the, the strap.
I moved the planning commission find the proposed removal, the proposed removal of fourteen heritage trees for the new city development center would not be contrary to the proposed. would not be contrary to the proposed, and the proposed, the purpose and intent of the general plan. Four trees, uh, um, are conditionally approved for removal, uh, pending the, the.
Approved with the condition that.
That would approve with the condition that the, uh, that the, uh, town council review them specifically, uh, for the possibility of saving them, and those items are.
Staff or town council?
Uh, staff, staff approved, uh, for, for saving them, fifty-five, seventy-six, eighty-nine, ninety-two. All right, and I know that on the tape, that should be very clear. I can hardly wait to see the best on this one. All right, does that make sense, does everyone understand what I'm doing on that? All right, good, you guys sounded very close to not understanding.
I'm not sure if I understand any, but I'll second that.
All right, moved in second, all right, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Close? All right, as we say into this, thank you much. All right.
If you approve removal, can council, uh.
They can do whatever they want.
If anyone is unsatisfied with the decision, they have ten days in which to appeal it in writing to staff, that can be done right at town hall, and it will be.
And so does she, so does she.
That's what I'm saying, and then, that's why I'm telling you, you have.
You have, you have every right to, 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 yes, yourself. Oh, I think you might counsel, yeah, excuse me.
No, you, you can appeal the decision of the planning commission to city council, and city council will hear the appeal, that you do not agree with their decision.
Yeah. So in other words.
Right now, I'm saying all the trees gone. You, you just gave approval to, to pick them off.
We, we, we intend to, we need approval to the, uh, to the.
To the tree removal permit.
To the tree removal permit, with four condition, with four under those conditions.
They were granted.
I, I don't think.
So.
Absolutely, so, yes, you do it.
Okay.
All right, all right, good. All right, so with that, thank you all for coming, and thanks for all the staff support on that. All right. Item, item five. Item five. Here's a question from your board, any, any items for your commission?
Commissioner Nellis, go with that.
Oh, yes.
Give him a second.
Good.
It's so nice of him to stay. Crazy.
I mean, that was one thing I was going to ask.
Are we all going to get to yell that Elvis has left the building, or is that?
Right, no commission report, staff report?
There's no planning commission meeting next month in November, so our next scheduled meeting will be December seventh, so a little earlier than normal.
Six.
Six, sorry. Uh, in terms of the agenda, we will be bringing two kind of long-range planning items to you. Uh, first, will be, we will be bringing back the discussion in form of a study session for the revisions to the heritage tree ordinance, um, based off of our last meeting, I believe, two months ago, in the direction that staff received, so Sally's working on some more quantitative type analyses to present back to you, um, for another round of study session. And then, we also will be bringing you the first piece of the larger general plan update, um, project. What we are hoping to bring forward in December is just an overview and a schedule of what we'll be looking forward to from December on into twenty eighteen, um, as well as your first element, first revised element for discussion purposes. Looking like that will be the open space and conservation element, so in terms of structure, it's, um, again, a study session type format, similar to what we've been doing with the heritage tree um, discussions, and, um, that's going to be our proposed approach.
I like how you tried to straighten, keep a straight face, and it was very.
Well, I saw my reflection in your glass, I sort of.
I actually have something to add, I never have anything, but Sally and I have worked together to make a removal PG&E, to commemorate the trees that they have agreed to provide that homeowners did not want, and given to the town, so that all went together, I believe, she's sending it over to them, good at times, so we have those at our disposal, at our.
And how many were then, do you remember?
I don't remember how many, she made a list.
She had a long list, yeah.
She had a whole table and tied it to the property address, and I didn't tally out how many, but it's specific, this is the property, this is what you agreed to.
Right, memorialized.
Boom, 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 and then they signed that they've received it and agree, and.
Sounds like we might be able to add a few on what we just went over.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, good, does anyone else? All right, I, I, I knew that you'd all be sort of shy about doing this, so I went ahead and did these beforehand, so.
There you go.
Oh, you did.
All right, but now I need a motion. All right, moved in second, moved in second, all of you in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, there we go.